And Lou. Thank you. Since Mike Ergo is not here this evening for a selectman ergo, I will run the meeting and then we'll be turning it over to a moderator. I just wanted to do a roll call and let you know that my name is Bob Carlson. In case you don't know, I've been honored to be one of your selectmen for the last three plus years. Also with us tonight, our selectwoman Nita Kincaid, Admin Finance Director Christine Diaz, IT Director Jim Russell, and Town Clerk Antoinette Pincaro. Welcome all tonight. I did, Jim didn't want me to mention to you that when you're using these microphones, get right up on it and speak. So, because if you're back here, you can't hear, but we want the people online to hear. So with no further ado, I'll open nominations for a moderator for this evening's meeting. Do I hear any nominations? Mr. Dan Spring. Lisa Marzella has been nominated. Do I hear a second? Mr. Sean Murphy, thank you for a second. Do I hear any other nominations? Do I hear any other nominations? If none, could I get a motion to close nominations? Okay, motion by Ann Nowak, second by Dave McCord. Now we will go to a vote. After I ask you to vote, I just have to give the people in line a second so we can get to find out what's, what the tally is there. All in favor of appointing Lisa Marzella as our moderator this evening, say aye. Aye. Okay, any opposed? We call that as something to one. Lisa, you have a fan in the back row. All right, Lisa, you are the moderator. Thank you very much.
Hey, first we'll go over the ground rules. All town residents wishing to speak shall raise their hand to be recognized. I'll call speakers one at a time to the microphone. Before you comment, please state your name and address for the record. Comments must be on topic, addressed solely to the question on the agenda. Individuals may have a second opportunity to speak only after everyone wishing to speak once has been recognized. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes and cannot yield their time to another. Prior to discussion, Selectman Carlson will say a few words, then Chief Steinhardt will give a presentation. On questions of protocol, voters may respectfully ask point of order, excuse me, order on procedure. Voter eligibility is summarized as follows. All registered voters of North Stonington and all persons owning at least $1,000 of taxable property on the last grant list are eligible to vote on the, on this item. Any person not legally qualified who fraudulently votes in any town meeting or votes more than once shall be fined not less than $300 or more than $500 and shall be imprisoned not less than one year or more than two years and shall be disenfranchised. Voting by assuming the name of another shall be guilty of a Class D felony, section 9-360. Following discussion, I'll call to move the question to vote and we will vote by paper ballot. Hearing no objections, these are the rules of the town meeting. I'll now ask the town clerk to read the call.
Warning is hereby given to the electors and those entitled to vote at town meetings of the town of North Stonington that a special town meeting shall be held at the following location on the date and time indicated for the purposes of transacting the business set forth below. Location, North Stonington Education Center Media Center, 298 Norwich Westerly Road, and via Zoom, Zoom link given in the call of the meeting. Webinar ID 85356546851, date August 23rd, 2021, time 7:00 PM. For the purpose of verifying registered voters, those wishing to attend the meeting online and vote online will need to pre-register through the link provided by 12:00 PM on August 23rd. In-person attendance will be available following COVID-19 guidelines. Number one, shall the town of North Stonington authorize the use of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the North Stonington Volunteer Fire Company in the amount of $165,000 to be distributed equally over three years?
Thank you. Now I'll invite Selectman Carlson to come up.
Okay, just a, just a few comments. The reason we brought this forth this evening, we think it's an important issue that the town should decide on. We've had multiple discussions with the fire company over the last two or three years on staffing. As we know, getting volunteers these days for most any organization is, is not easy. If you read the paper, you'll see that our surrounding towns are having the same issues. Different towns handle it different ways. In this case, we did agree to a single per diem in a previous budget and we were hoping to bring this money forward to use for a second per diem over the next three years. I know there's a question usually will come up is, well, what happens after three years? Someone will say, well, you know, they're just going to put it in the budget. And that may be true. I don't know who the selectman will be three years from now or the Board of Finance members three years from now, but they will have the opportunity to make a line item in the budget and put it forth to the public. One advantage we have is very seldom do we have an initiative that gets paid for that does not come on a taxpayer dollars that we get to monitor for three years. If the town decides that this is a good program, then the town has a chance to vote to keep it in the budget. It's ultimately a town decision. The last I counted, there's only three selectmen and I think eight Board of Finance members count in the alternates. So that's 11 votes to determine whether this gets passed, the budget gets passed three years from now or not. Actually be four years from now. We brought it forward because we think it's a good initiative. It will keep the town safe and in a rare occasion here, it does not cost the taxpayers any additional money. So we'll be supporting a second per diem for three years. Chief Stein, I'll give you the presentation with the exact breakdown, but we as selectmen think it's a good thing for the town and we'd like to see it move forward. Thank you. Chief Steinhardt.
Good evening. I'm going to move over to the screen so I actually can see it. All right, the, this is our presentation for the volunteer fire company. We're going too fast. Since 1945, the fire company has relied on residents to volunteer to respond emergencies within the bounds of the town. For years, you've been able to count on those living within and working within the town to provide necessary staffing. As a town, demographic has changed over the years. The availability of volunteers has changed. Again, the workforce that lived in the town now works outside the town and we've become a bedroom community. In the 1990s, the fire company began advertising the town, advising, sorry, town officials that populate population point and attendance prediction to future for some level of weekend, weekday staffing. Sorry, we're getting ahead of myself. So again, we started in the 90s that we needed help. This was a long-term thing. Hey, so this is coming. It's been a thing in the budget since the 90s. We've always put it in there. It wasn't an actual funded line. We were looking just saying, hey, this is coming. We always put a number in there with a zero in the budget. So it was something that we've always had, just sort of heads up, this is coming. Despite the loss of available volunteers, residents still expect emergency responses should that arise. Likewise, the fire service technology continues to advance along with requests for service. Again, our numbers from, if you want to go back to the 70s when we did roughly, you know, about 100 calls a year max to where we are today running about 350 to 400 calls a year, including taking on supplemental EMS calls. So we have taken on that. Up until about five years ago, the fire company did not respond to medical calls. Now we are in the absence of an ambulance. Today's fire company averages 300 calls a year. The average goes on the age of the daytime responders is 50. I think that's being generous and I think it might be a little older than that. Again, despite numerous pleas for the residents, for additional volunteers that respond during the daytime, it's a special that we need, has been minimal. We've tried everything. You see us online. We have flyers have been out for years. We did a video from, actually the selectmen put on video for us that was out and we tried that and I think the whole process, we were able to get one person. In 2019, the fire company requested the town to fund two weekday per diem firefighters to help ensure the service were available to the residents during the day. Again, one was approved. Again, we asked for two. One was approved with understanding that we'd look at it next year for the second. Here we are at the next year. Again, it was, the second one was left out of the budget, hoping that this funding would come through from the emergency act to fund this for the future. Again, that's what it says. Why the two per diems? One per diem firefighter must still wait for volunteers to respond to the station and then to respond to calls. Many of our daytime volunteers live at least five to seven minutes away from the station. Again, with this second guy, it adds to the numbers you need in a truck to leave. Again, it makes it safer for our firefighter. Right now, when there is no ambulance in town, our one firefighter responds by himself during the day to medical calls. He could be doing CPR on somebody until mutually the ambulance comes into town. So again, it's safer all around for the resident and for the firefighter. Again, the breakdown is the funding for the per diem, the second per diem firefighter is $20 an hour. 10-hour days because they work from 6 to 4:00 PM when 95% of our volunteers leave town to go to work. Also averaging $1,000 a week, $1,000 a week, again, $52,000. And then the additional $3,000 is uniforms, storm coverage and late calls. Just like the other day for the major storm that we were going to have. Gives us the ability to have additional staffing at the building. We didn't need them this storm. We had enough volunteers to staff it, but it does give you the availability to have an extra one or two people at the building committed to not have to leave for the town of North Stonington. So it gives you the $55,000 a year and this 165 is for three years. This is what we submitted. Originally it was 60. We reduced it down to 55 and this is the number we get. That is my short presentation. I'll turn over Mr. Carlson, our moderator.
Thank you, Chief Steinhardt. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the call for discussion to follow. Motion made by Dan Spring. Seconded by Ann Nowak. I have a we hope for a vote to open for discussion. All in favor? Okay. Okay, anyone? Who would like to be the first to comment? Dan?
Dan Spring, 231 Wayosup, also Chair of the Board of Finance. Just so our legislative body knows, the public here, that the Board of Finance had approved this appropriation unanimously. It wasn't noted, but through the Relief Act, these dollars can be delegated and we can't define as Board of Finance or Board of Selectment how these assets will be used, other than that it goes to the volunteer fire company. So certainly in dialogue that has happened over a number of years, there has been a want, a need for a second per diem firefighter. So that's kind of how it's happened. We have approved the assets to be moved to the volunteer fire company to be used at their discretion and they are given definition as to how these assets will be utilized. So I would ask for your support. I think it's just been a great opportunity. And we'll see where it takes us over the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jim?
Jim Holders, finish off Gil Road. I'd like somebody to explain the difference in the verbiage in the question from what the taxpayers have seen in the past versus what's in the question here.
So Jim, could you come back and be just really a little bit more specific? So are you asking why the wording in the call does not specifically call out the second per diem?
That's correct. Doesn't call out for a second per diem. The way this reads, the money could be used for anything instead of designated for the per diem firefighter as it's been represented to the public in the past.
So in answer to that, I think Chairman Spring of the Board of Finance just addressed that. And I think it's because we have to do, give the money in a, almost like a donation, but in a form to the Board of, to the, to the fire company to use as they wish. But as they are telling us, this is how they're defining how they're going to use it. So we have to trust in our fellow fire company and our fellow people in North Stonington on how things are going to be used. They're telling us this is how it's going to be used. I believe that's to be true.
Can you explain why it was changed? If hiring another person is not consistent with the federal guidelines, then is this a proper way to do it?
I mean, I, I would be guessing at the answer to that question. I could defer to either Chairman Spring or Admin Finance Director Diaz.
Christine, could you respond?
So I wouldn't say that it's been misrepresented to the public from when this was brought up to the Board of Selectmen, when it was discussed at the town meeting in June, when we started talking about the rescue plan funds and when it was brought forward to the Board of Finance, it was always phrased in this way, that it's $165,000 to be spread over three years for the fire company. They've given us their assurances. It'll be used for the per diem. It is within the guidelines of the rescue plan to do it in this fashion. So this is the way it needs to be done.
If this money is given to the fire department to use for this per diem, which I think they probably need, what mechanism is there to allow this money to be shown in a budget so that we can see the actual cost for running the fire department? Like when you've got the radios, $35,000 a while back, I don't believe that's showing up anywhere in the budget because it come out of a special fund. Why aren't we seeing the true cost to run our departments, not just the fire department, but all departments?
Chief Steinhardt, would you like to respond? Go ahead.
So so every year we do submit an itemized budget to the town. It does show specifically what every line is spent down to the penny. Also, we have the profit and loss that's available every month that shows what the budget was, how much was spent, what is remaining. And we do provide this every year to the selectmen at the end of the budget year. We do the closeout in our annual report. So every dollar that is given to the fire company is itemized and light item tracked through QuickBooks. So down to the penny, we can show the selectmen when we review every year, how much money's been spent, where it goes to.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Sean?
Yes, I'd like to ask for an amendment to the question. After North Stonington Volunteer Fire Company, I would like it amended to add, for the purpose of hiring a second weekday firefighter. Do I hear a second? I'd like to amend the motion to discuss this question as worded and amend the question to read after North Stonington Volunteer Fire Company to amend that to read for the purpose of hiring a second weekday firefighter.
Okay, Sean Murphy made a motion. Is there a second? I'm looking at the parliamentary procedure at a glance and it, it states that to amend a motion, and you can amend the motion, you can make a motion and seconded by someone and then the motion is debatable and it's required by majority vote to to amend it. Okay, Sean Murphy made a motion to amend the call and it was seconded by Charlie Steinhardt to amend the call to say shall the town of North Stonington authorize the use of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the North Stonington Volunteer Fire Company in the amount of $165,000 to be used for a second per diem firefighter to be distributed equally over three years? That's the motion. Now it's discussion? Discussion regarding the amended motion? No discussion? Mike, you're recognized.
Mike Anderson, 83 Cedars Road. My only concern, you know, I trust that the fire company is going to do what they said they're going to do. I have no problem with this. The only concern is, is getting more specific, does that run afoul with what you're going to do, what the federal government says? You know, what you're doing with this federal COVID relief money. Right now, I believe the law says that you could use it for your emergency services. Getting specific with it, you know, I don't, I just don't want it to run afoul with any kind of federal, any audit as to what we're doing with the, with the money. So leaving it a little bit more vague is not a bad thing in my opinion. And you know, whereas changing it to be so specific, like I said, might, might run afoul of the law. I don't know if Christine wants to speak to that, but it'd be my only concern.
So the wording that we have brought forward to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and now to the town meeting has been vetted by the town attorney. Any amendment that we would make has not been vetted and I don't know that it would be an approved use of the funds. So you can vote to do what you wish, but I don't know that we can do that.
Any other comments regarding?
Well, I'm in favor of the fire company hiring a second per diem firefighter. I really question if we are purposely keeping this question vague and leaving out our intended purpose. If our intended purpose is not, does not, disqualifies it from using the grant fund, then maybe we shouldn't be asking to use the grant fund for this and we should be doing this out of our own general fund.
Any other comments regarding the motion? Jim Holder, do you recognize?
I would agree with what Sean just said. The last thing we want to do is start providing information to the federal government that is not accurate and does not meet their standards for what they expect this funds to be used for. It's not something that we should be doing in, with a vague thing, just to slide it through the back door. Either it's right or it's wrong and it should stand on its own merits. And if we don't know, we should wait and find out.
I would like to note that that this, that this call, that the original question was vetted through the town attorney. Any further discussion? All in favor of amending the motion? Aye. Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. Excuse me, the nays have it. I beg your pardon. All right, moving on, is there further discussion regarding the question at hand? Okay, all in favor of moving the call to vote? Opposed? I beg your pardon? I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Did I misunderstood, Mr. Holder? When we move a question, there is no discussion. I'm sorry, be, be patient with me for one moment. Joe Gross? I'm sorry. All right, for the record, there's for the record, there's hand sanitizer and wipes there. Okay, so was the motion made to end the debate? Is that the motion? All right. So in order to do that, the motion can be made and seconded, but the motion is not debatable. And it can be, we can end the, end the debate with a two-thirds vote. So Dan Spring made the motion and who seconded the motion? Charlie Steinhardt, the fourth, seconded? May I have a show of hands, all in favor of ending the debate on this question? We have online?
Do you, do you want to ask online to raise their hand? As a vote of yes, or if they don't, it's a no?
Yes. Wait a second while we, while we're checking online for the attendees that are attending online. Okay, all opposed? Good? Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries. So we'll pass out the ballots? Or does everyone have a ballot? Okay. Oh, excuse me. Before we continue, Antoinette, can you read the call again for the online people?
Question one, shall the town of North Stonington authorize the use of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the North Stonington Volunteer Fire Company in the amount of $165,000 to be distributed equally over three years? in the amount of $165,000 to be distributed equally over three years?
Okay, I guess I, um, I failed to move the question to vote. So all in favor of voting on this question? Opposed? If you're online, please make sure you vote. We will close voting in 30 seconds. Last call for online votes. Get your vote in now. Okay, there were 40 votes cast. The yeses are 30 and nos are 10. So the yeses have it. Have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Who, who motioned? Kathy Bond made the motion and seconded by Charlie Steinhardt.